Run this campaign like Stephanie. Light ends a lot sooner than yours.
We'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. Welcome Joe Deacon and his listening audience at WCBU as well as cable channel 22. In accordance with Governor JB Pritzker's executive order 2020-69 and 2020-74, limiting meetings to the lesser of 25 persons or 25% of the overall room capacity, and executive orders 2020-07, 33, 44, 59, and 74, requiring the provision of video, audio, or telephonic access to the meetings, as well as the CDC recommending social distancing of at least six feet between persons. City Hall is implementing changes and restrictions for the city council meeting on January 26, 2020, 2021, while complying with the Open Meetings Act. The council meeting will be held in person in city council chambers. There is a room capacity restrictions of 25 persons at one time, which would result in a wait to enter if met. Temperature screenings and face coverings are required for access inside City Hall. Members of the public and the media are invited to watch through the live stream on the city of Peoria's website, YouTube, local television channel 22, or listen through WCBU radio. While public comment is available in person, the option to submit comments through the city clerk's office due to room capacity restrictions is available as well. Any submissions will be read into the record. The agenda, minutes, and video podcast of the meeting will be available online through the city website. Madam Clerk, the council microphones are open for roll call.
Artis. Councilmember Ali. Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Grab. Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Montalongo. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Riegenbach.
Here.
And you have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. A notice was received by members of the city council in accordance with rules established in ordinance number 16142, and the members will be deemed authorized to attend the meeting electronically unless a motion objecting to the members' electronic attendance is made, seconded, and approved by two-thirds of the members of the city council physically present at the meeting. If no such motion is made and seconded, then the request by the member to attend electronically shall be deemed approved by the city council and the presiding officer and shall declare the requesting members present. We've had requests both from councilmembers Ruck Regal and Jensen to attend electronically. Seeing no objections from the council, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Ruck Regal.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we'd like to invite everyone to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk.
Our first item of business is a public hearing regarding the establishment of a citywide combined sewer overflow remediation district and proposed sewer rates for 2023 to 2026.
Thank you. Take a motion to open the public hearing. Motion by Councilmember Moore, seconded by Councilmember Riegenbach. All in favor, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen.
Aye.
Councilmember Ruck Regal.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. The public hearing is now open. Anyone who would like to address the city council regarding the citywide combined sewer overflow remediation district and proposed sewer rates for 2023 to 2026. Second call for anyone who would like to address the council in this public hearing regarding the establishment of a citywide combined sewer overflow remediation district and proposed sewer rates for 2023 to 2026. Third and final call. This is for the public hearing regarding the establishment of a citywide combined sewer overflow district and proposed sewer rates for 2023 to 2026. I'm seeing none. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing by Councilman Grab and seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Seeing no discussion, please cast your ballots to close the public hearing. Councilmember Jensen.
Aye.
And Councilmember Ruck Regal.
Aye.
And that motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Yes, I believe that Councilmember Seer has a motion on the minutes.
Okay. Councilmember Seer.
Move to approve the minutes of the joint city council and town board meeting held on January 12, 2021, as printed.
Seconded by Councilman Kelly. Are any corrections or changes to the minutes? Seeing none. Hold on a second. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen.
Aye.
Councilmember Ruck Regal.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Our first item is a township item 21-026 is a request to award a contract for renovation at 427 West Main Street to Mid Illinois Construction Company.
Thank you. Trustee Grab.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Motion to approve. Seconded, trustee Moore. Is there any discussion on this item? Trustee Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to congratulate, give a pat on the back, to our township supervisor, Mr. Abnauer. I think this is going to be a real benefit to a lot of people in our community who need help. This looks a bigger facility, a better located facility, et cetera. I'd just like to express my thanks as a trustee, but also as a citizen of Peoria. I think this is very good. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? We have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Ruck Regal.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We're at the consent agenda. 21-027 is a request to approve the 2021 annual city and county joint legislative agenda. 21-028 is a request to purchase one outdoor warning siren from Reagan Communications in the amount of $41,216. 21-029 is a request to approve extension number 1A to the 2019 storm sewer repair contract with J.C. Dillon Incorporated, and to authorize the city manager to execute the extension to increase the original contract in the amount of $900,000. 21-030 is a request to approve a contract with Nimbus Now for BMC Remedy Force Licensing in an amount not to exceed $29,600. 21-031 is a request to authorize the city manager to sign a three-year agreement with Supreme Radio Communications for electronic services in the yearly amount of $123,577. 21-032 is a request to concur with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class C-1 general commercial district for an adult-use cannabis dispensary for property located at 5001 North University Street. 21-033 is a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class C-1 general commercial district for a vehicle wash for the property located at 1217 West Glen Avenue and 4926 North University Street. 21-034 is an appointment by Mayor Artis to the Peoria Area Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors with a request to concur of Roberta English, and that completes your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Items to remove from consent this evening. Councilmember Riegenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull item 21-033.
033, thank you. Councilman Montalongo.
032.
032. Councilmember Grab.
Chairman, I'd like to remove 27, 28, and 31.
27, 28.
31.
31, thank you. Any other items to remove from consent this evening? Seeing or hearing none, we have a motion to approve the remaining items. Councilman Riegenbach, seconded, Councilman Euler. If there's no further discussion, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen.
Aye.
Councilmember Ruck Regal.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
21-027 is the request to approve the annual city and county joint legislative agenda.
Councilmember Grab.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Manager, this is a communicate from you to us. Could you turn to the third page in the document? Vertical Capital Projects. Under county request for the election commission, there's a reference to District 6.
That's correct. I think that's the county board District 6. This is a joint document between the city and the county, and with the county request, I think that's the county board District 6 is the reason that's laid out that way.
I got you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that clarification. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Okay. Motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Seer. Further discussion on this item?
I have an item.
Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you. I just, on page 2, I just want to make sure that under request for position support, the first item that's listed that's a joint request, it makes reference just to enable counties to provide appropriate levels of service. I just want to make sure that's updated, so it says municipalities or counties and cities, so that we're included in that.
We can make that change. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further comments on the item? I would just like this to reflect, and I think that it was shared earlier when the council got a notice of these items, that we would like to have the city request that's listed in that first section for public safety pension reform. We would like to place that at the top of the list in the biggest font that you have available with bold letters, underlined.
Understood.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second to approve. If there's no further discussion, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen.
Aye.
Councilmember Ruck Regal.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
21-028 is the request to approve the purchase of an outdoor warning system from Reagan Communications.
Thank you. Councilmember Grab.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looks like a great job being done by our fire chief, our city manager, and our fifth district councilman. Is our fire chief able to hear? Uh-oh.
I'm here, Councilman.
Yes. Chief Artis, could you give us a little overview of this very important purchase?
Certainly. So, in working with Director with OEM, Mike Vaughn, we've targeted a few areas out in the northern quarter that are lacking in the proper siren response. We're doing pretty well on the west side of, out 150, but there were some gaps in the northern part. And so, we targeted this area, which is the right-of-way just outside of Hickory Grove School. We did have conversation with the superintendent of the Dunlap School District, although it's not on their property. We wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to interfere with any of the school proceedings, and they were 100% on board. So, hopefully those will cover a little bit of the gap that currently exists. We do feel that probably in the near future, we're going to have to have one more installed out there. But this will certainly go a long way in helping the citizens in the northern part of the city.
I know that Councilman Seer is interested in filling all these gaps, and this is a huge step in the right direction. A number of years ago, we had a tornado really demolish the Norwood Elementary School, and the principal got the children to safety just in the nick of time. Go back far enough, in the 90s, there was some discussion by our council then and our city manager to completely do away with the outdoor warning siren systems. And of course, we know that that would be a travesty for our public. It gives us one more means of communicating with our citizens in event of an emergency and the need to mass mobilize. Councilman Seer, thank you for your work on this. And Chief Artis, we're looking forward to approving another one as soon as possible and make certain we have all the gaps filled. Thank you. Move for approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen.
Aye.
Councilmember Ruck Regal.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
21-031 is the request to sign a three-year agreement with Supreme Radio Communications.
Thank you. Councilmember Grab.
This is an item where I think we got some help from a member of our community, a citizen manager, Eurek, and David Tuttle, if David's able to hear this. Do we not have an amendment here on this one?
Yes, Councilman, thank you. You have a yellow sheet on your desk. This was brought to our attention by one of our ESDA volunteers that pointed out that the contract still had maintenance for the automatic vehicle locators in the public works vehicles, which we no longer, we discontinued several years ago. So, the revised dollar amount amounts to $122,317.80, which is less than $123,577.80. So, it does provide a little bit of savings for us in terms of the three-year agreement with Supreme.
This is great work on the part of our citizenry to draw our attention to this. And thank you, manager. With that, I would move to authorize your signature on that three-year agreement.
Seconded by Councilmember Moore. Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen.
Aye.
Councilmember Ruck Regal.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
21-032 is the recommendation to adopt an ordinance approving a special use for the adult-use cannabis at 5001 North University Street.
Councilmember Montalongo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move for approval with one amendment to say the special use must have the business dispensary opened and operating within 90 days of approval of this special use.
Seconded by Councilmember Euler. Discussion on this item?
I have some.
Councilmember Moore, and then Jensen.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I saw a question. I don't know if it was one of the emails that we received. And actually, I would prefer to have Councilwoman Jensen speak, because I believe it was her email where she asked a question. So, I will defer to her comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilwoman Moore. I know that the whole council received a letter yesterday evening with some concerns about the proposal. So, I did send a email out, and I'd ask, one of the concerns brought up is whether or not if this is approved and New Med decides not to operate here, but in another city where they have an application pending, can they transfer the special use and the approval to another license holder that may not necessarily meet the city's requirement? So, I'd ask Corporation Council to respond to that. I know that you did in an email to all of us, but can you explain that there is some limitations on transferring?
Thank you, Councilwoman. When the city implemented a licensing ordinance for the various cannabis businesses in 2019, one of the things the council insisted on was to make sure that any of the dispensary licenses were non-transferable. So, under the licensing ordinance, a license received would not be transferable to anyone other than the applicant who applied for the license at the time.
Okay. And that's very helpful to know. Other issues that were raised and have been raised by others is that it's in close proximity to other dispensaries, the other two dispensaries, I think, that we have in the city. And so, I ask if you could summarize. I know we've had extensive discussions about placing limitations on the number of dispensaries or limiting them to districts. If you could explain what limitations we currently have in our ordinance, what's been discussed, and then the rationale for the current state, I guess, of our restrictions.
Sure. Well, cannabis businesses are regulated on the local level, really under two sections of the ordinance. One is under the zoning code, and a cannabis dispensary is a permitted use in all of our industrial uses, and then there are special uses in all of our commercial uses. We also implemented a licensing regulation for all of the dispensaries and all of the associated businesses that were approved in 2019. At the time, the BLS region we were in would only allow three new licenses by May of, I believe it was 2020 at the time. And then, we had two existing medical dispensaries in our area that would have been eligible for secondary licenses. So, at least as of May of 2020, there would have been a state cap on five in our entire BLS region. So, I believe at our policy session, we did have some lengthy discussion about whether or not to cap the licenses. And because it was sort of a new and emerging issue, and we had no idea how many businesses would come forward, we did not put a cap on the number of licenses. We also do not have a cap on the distance the businesses can be in location to each other, except to say that there is a requirement that they have to be 500 feet from a church, a school, a recreational-type facility. The state licensing scheme, however, does require that the dispensary cannot be located more than 1,500 feet, or cannot be located less than 1,500 feet, excuse me, from another dispensary. There's your short summary, Councilwoman.
Okay. So, and my understanding also is that, do we know how many more licenses are going to be approved for our area or be permitted in our area, or at least in our city, or I guess in the BLS district?
I would have to look. I don't know past May of 2020, given some of the COVID holdup, where they are exactly in the state rollout. And I also don't know how many existing licenses there are, but we could certainly do some research and provide that back to you.
Okay. But currently, you believe it's five for the region?
At least when we did the presentation in 2019, we knew that by May of 2020, the state would issue a maximum of five licenses for our entire five-county BLS region. And we were aware of two of them at the time. We know that both of the medical dispensaries have either applied for or now received a secondary application. There could be one other one. I just can't happen to recall it off the top of my head, Councilwoman. I apologize.
Okay. No, I appreciate that information. I guess, just for the record, I do have some concerns and would like, you know, to ask the city manager and Corporation Council if we could have either proposals brought back to us after we get the information of how many potential licenses there are out there, whether we need to have another policy session or we can just provide input if it's put on the council agenda to set some, whether we need a cap and/or distance limitations, because I do have concerns of, you know, having too many of these facilities and having too many in one area in our city.
Sure. I'll be happy to provide some additional information. And then, based on that, if you'd like to do another policy session, we'll be happy to put that together.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore. Okay. Any other discussion on this item? We have a motion in a second. Seeing no lights, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen.
I'm going to vote nay.
Councilmember Ruck Regal.
Aye.
That motion passes with 10 ayes, 1 no. Councilmember Jensen. Madam Clerk.
21-033 is a request to concur with the recommendation to adopt an ordinance approving a special use on Glen Avenue and University Street for a vehicle wash.
Councilmember Riegenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move for a 30-day deferral to our second meeting in February. And I had spoken with the petitioner today, and they've agreed to have a public... in February. And I had spoken with the petitioner today, and they've agreed to have a public meeting. Still to be figured out how that works in this COVID environment, but they will have a public meeting to discuss the request before that meeting. So 30-day deferral.
Motion to defer is seconded by Councilwoman Montalongo. Discussion on the deferral? Councilman Kelly, and then Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'll be outvoted here, but I'm going to oppose the deferral. I don't know that it is necessary. Somehow, some way, in our zoning code, car washes have been, or there's some special provision for car washes. No one seems to know why there's a special provision, but there is. Otherwise, this would have gone through administratively some time ago. The, I've gotten, as I think everyone else has received, phone calls and emails on the subject almost universally opposed to this car wash. I do not see how we can not approve it. It is a very straightforward real estate transaction, very straightforward land use. Some people, many people who've contacted me think they're in the car wash business and know where car washes ought to be located.
Councilman, we need to try to narrow the scope to the deferral, not to the merits of...
Yes, okay. So I will be opposed to the deferral. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second on a deferral. Is there any additional discussion on the deferral? The Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Councilman Riggenbach, for proposing to defer this so that a public hearing and an opportunity for more meaningful public input can be provided. I just ask that notices to not just surrounding residents, but all the surrounding neighborhood associations, if not all of them. My understanding, there's at least four or five that are near the location that didn't have notice about the proposal before it went to the zoning board. If we can just make sure they're all notified, and whether it has to be done, you know, in more than one method, by email, posting, of course, on the website, and social media, and through, hopefully, press releases, with ample time so people can work with their schedules and attend. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? Councilman Montalongo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask Director Black, if he's available, what exactly our policy is as far as contacting the public when there is a special use?
Thank you, Councilman. We contact the public for any, any public hearing, so whether it's a special use, or rezoning, or variance request, in various ways. Under state statute, we have to put a legal notice in the Journal Star, so that's, that's our legal requirement. Beyond that, we mail out postcards to all property owners within 250 feet of the perimeter of the subject property. We place the large, yellow, public hearing signs on the property indicating that a public hearing is coming up and information on that public hearing. We send out information via social media, the city's Twitter page, the city's Facebook page. The information is on the city's webpage. I believe we also put information on Nick's Door, which is another social media platform. The information on the public hearing is included in the weekly issues update that the manager sends out of his office, and it is also sent to everyone on the communications list, which includes, I believe, almost every neighborhood association, plus the media and other individuals in the community that have indicated that they're interested in what is happening in the city.
Director Black, you mentioned the neighborhood associations. Could you repeat that one more time?
So in terms of direct outreach to neighborhood associations, I do know that a good number of neighborhood associations have signed up to be on the communications list that Stacy Peterson sends out, and everyone who gets the issues update is, or everyone on the communications list receives this information via issues update. And if any of the neighborhood associations are following city social media, either Facebook or Twitter, then they would also receive notification that way.
Perhaps it would be best just to include all neighborhood associations. I know we have a spreadsheet with all the neighborhood associations, with the contact, who the president is, and their emails. Maybe it would be best just to include everybody. That way, we have it covered. So that would be my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Ruckregal?
Aye.
That motion passes with eight ayes and two noes. Voting no, Councilmembers Seer and Kelly. Madam Clerk?
Regular Business twenty-one dash oh thirty-five is a request to approve the declaration of local state of emergency.
Councilman Riggenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for the approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Ruckregal?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-one dash oh thirty-six is a communication from the city manager and director of Public Works with a request for the following. A is to adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2021 revised annual budget relating to the use of the South Village Tiff Fund balance in the amount of $495,940, and the use of Stormwater Utility Fund balance in the amount of $15,000, for a total of $510,940, to provide additional funding for the construction of Fire Station Four. And B is to approve the low-bid contract with D. Joseph Construction Company for the construction of the new Fire Station Number Four in the amount of $2,793,695.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. In looking at the communication, you will find that the $2,005 that is referenced was a part of the CIP three years ago, in 2019. The, this project was added to the capital improvement budget for $2.5 million. Two years later, we find that costs don't stay the same, and so when the bids went out, they came back from four, individual, from four companies. And all four of those were higher than the $2.5 that we had budgeted back in 2019. The highest bid was $3,007,000. The lowest bid was $2,007,000. And the second item refers to the second, to the lowest bidder. What I would ask that you approve is the amount to come out of the Tiff funds that have been set aside for projects like this to, to be able to allow this station to be completed on the south side of Peoria. As you all know, we've gone back and forth with Station Four. It opened, it was closed, it reopened, and now this station is going to replace it. And we simply are moving funds from, these are not new dollars. They're already in the, in the, our city coffers. They're not coming from the budget, the everyday working budget. They're coming from special funds that are set aside, and I would ask that you approve that item. Thank you.
Motion to approve item A, seconded by Councilmember Riggenbach. Is there discussion on item A? Councilman Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just some clarification. I'm a little confused, and maybe I'm not reading the communications properly, but it seems as though we, versus our estimate, we were short $200,000, and the, and we're, we need about a half million. Am I correct about that?
There's also the design of the fire station expenses that were part of this project cost and the land acquisition costs that were included. So all told, the project is about $500,000 over budget. That's the reason for the budget amendment at the 510 figure.
Okay, okay. That makes sense. That makes, thank you.
Further discussion on item A? We have a motion and a second. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Ruckregal?
Aye.
The motion passes with ten ayes, one no. Councilmember Montalongo, and Councilmember Moore on item B.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do plan to move for approval of this item B, but I do have some concerns that I'd like to bring up at this time. One of those concerns involves the, the contract with the contractor, and thankfully, I appreciate the Business Enterprise participation form that was attached because it provides with additional information. Point of order, Madam, Mr. Chair, do you want to approve it and then come back on for comments?
We can get a motion on the floor, and then you can have the floor back if you...
So I move for approval?
Okay, motion to approve and seconded by Councilmember Ali. Additional discussion, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. On the attached document, the Minority and Women Business Enterprise Participation Form, we list in the middle of the form four different good-faith efforts to make those minority and female participation goals. As listed, 18%, as we've talked about a lot, is per trade for minority workers, 3% per trade for female workers, 10% for subcontractors, minority subcontractors, and 5% for female subcontractors. And so my question, one of my questions is, when we say make a good-faith effort, how do we document that? What is, what is turned in to suggest that there actually was a good-faith effort? And what is good-faith, what does that translate to?
Councilwoman, thank you. In this bid, we had four bidders. Each of the first three bidders, when they submitted their initial bids, their minority contractor, the lowest three, the fourth was a minority contractor. However, their bid was $1 million over the low-bid price. Each of the other three, their initial submissions for minority contractors was in the 2% to 2.5% range. And then our staff negotiated and worked with them to get them to go back out and look at finding more subcontractors. And that is where we ended up with the low bidder at a negotiate, after the negotiations and the work that was done. They moved their subcontractor utilization up from 2.4 or 5% to the 9.3% that you see here in front of you for recommendations. So I think from the, from the staff's perspective, we felt that they did truly provide a good-faith effort and went out after they had submitted their initial bid to work towards trying to achieve that goal.
Had some type of documents that you were able to reference to show that?
Yes.
Okay. How do they plan to achieve, so you have it in writing, how they tried to achieve that?
Yes.
Okay, that's a good thing. So we've got these goals that they've listed, that they're going to try to reach under the workforce and subcontractor goals. What are the penalties if they don't reach these goals?
Again, these are, these are goals. They're, and we can't make these hard and fast rules that you have to require that you meet those numbers, or that we penalize someone if they don't make those numbers. But these are the goals that we have set. Our, our facilities manager is very confident that by working with each one of the respective construction trades, that they can exceed, meet or exceed the workforce numbers at the 18%. As submitted, they stated that they, they will make that number. Now, what we can do is we'll, we'll monitor that. As the project is under construction, we'll provide you with the periodic updates of what we can do in terms of, of monitoring the construction progress to make sure that they meet that, that goal that they have laid out and said that they would.
I'm reminded that when we replaced Fulkers in front of Treewind School a year and a half ago, they had a 28% labor utilization rate, I believe it was. How were they able to, to reach a rate so far above the city's standard?
I think that, I think that the contractor, in concert with the Public Works Department, worked to make sure that those numbers were met and exceeded on that project. And I think that you have our commitment that at least our staff will be working very diligently to make sure that we meet those utilization numbers as we employ tradespeople out of the halls.
In fact, I recall there was, wasn't there some incentives on that, on that Fulkers Street project? I think there may have been some incentives to get...
I can't recall offhand. There may have been, but I can't recall if we had...
But you can't remember every project that comes down? Come on now, Patrick. Sorry about that. Another question I have is about the, I know there was another contractor that's a minority contractor on here that's not listed, the architect. So where does that architect's percentage fall in here?
Well, as part of the entire project, it would fall into that overall, but it's not part of the spend of the prime contractor building that project. But, but if you'll recall, the architectural firm that we used on the design work on this project, of which roughly about $300,000 was spent, was a minority firm. So we did utilize that minority firm to do that design work for.
So is there some document or something that will come back to show the total project minority?
We can, we can prepare that and certainly provide that that shows the amount of minority participation on the entire project.
And so as I'm looking at the list of selected subcontractors, so, well, first of all, thank you for that. So I don't know whose idea it was to submit that. I don't think we've seen this before here. So I appreciate showing those selected subcontractors in Section Three and Section Four on this document. I'm reminded of when we did MacArthur Street Bridge, I received a call from a trucker who was complaining that, he was a minority, African-American trucker, that there were no minorities in trucking on that project. And shortly thereafter, after I was able to speak with Public Works and they spoke with the contractor, then the contractor actually used that particular black contractor. So that was a wonderful thing. And so when I'm looking at this document, I'm certain there's going to be some trucking need, and I'm not, I don't recognize some of these names. Perhaps there's a trucker on here that I don't recognize. But on the scope of work, it doesn't list trucking. So I'm wondering if there are some jobs that have not been listed here.
That I don't know the answer to, but I can certainly ask our facilities manager and get back to you.
Well, yeah, because I'm sure, I mean, I'm not a builder, but in order to build something of this magnitude, I'm sure there's going to have to be some kind of footings or something put in that they're going to have to excavate, and then have to have somebody haul that out of there. And that's not listed here. So if that one's missing, I started wondering what else might be missing. And so although I will proceed to approve this contract, I would like to see the entire list of subcontractors, starting with trucking, and knowing that there are at least three or four African-American truckers that reside in 61605, I, my expectation is that this, this contractor, D. Joseph, has probably already reached out to several of them, and would like to make sure that their names are listed here. here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, on item A, I meant to hit the yes. I hit no, and I will certainly be supporting B.
It was probably leftover from the declaration of emergency, and you went to vote no when you voted yes. Well, Madam Clerk, the record would reflect that Councilman Montalongo was an I vote on item A to 21036.
So noted.
Any additional discussion on this item? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Ruckregel?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
21037 is a request to approve a resolution to increase the compensation of the city manager by $5,000 to be allocated as a bonus salary increase, deferred compensation, or any combination as deemed appropriate by the city manager.
Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a first for everything, and this will be the first time that I support a salary increase for the city manager. I think that we need to give credit where credit's due, and I want to ensure that the council sends a resounding message that we appreciate the effort that you've put in this year. You've definitely earned and deserve this increase that we're putting forward tonight. I can speak for the fact that many times this year, I have called and gotten a text back that you're in a meeting related to COVID or a press conference for COVID, and I've seen the hard work that's gone into addressing the COVID situation on top of doing an outstanding job managing the city this year and working with us on all of the objectives that we've had. Even when we couldn't make decisions amongst ourselves, you were still keeping things humming along at City Hall. And so, I know, I appreciate what you've contributed here, and so I'll be supporting this tonight.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Is there any additional discussion on this item? Councilman Rigenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would concur with the comments from Councilman Euler and just say I don't think there would have been anybody else I would have wanted in that manager's chair in the past year. So, hats off, Mr. Manager. And I think it's important for the public to remember with all of the, all of the drama of COVID and the shutdowns and what it did to our revenues, we were able to get through that without raising property taxes. So, that speaks highly of the creativity that takes place with our department heads as well. So, well noted and well deserved.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item?
I'll just add my thanks to the city manager and his team. I definitely have to comment because I will never have another opportunity to vote on a raise for city manager, but certainly 2020, I hope that neither you or any of the council members ever have to deal with a year like that and what happened to us. And your solid leadership throughout the whole thing, we couldn't have asked for more. So, the public knows, we just finished the review process for the manager and across the board. The council was extremely complimentary of the constant moves that were having to be made to adjust to the implications from the pandemic. I also think it's important for us to note that at council direction, the management team were all given a directive to take furlough days, and the total of the furlough days amounted to about 7% of their compensation. So, everybody that Sal Reed received a reduction through the furloughs of 7%. And city staff definitely did their part to help us try to close that gap, and we appreciate it.
Not seeing any additional lights. We have a motion in a second on the floor. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Ruckregel?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
21038 is a request to adopt an ordinance to remove certain properties from the East Village Growth Cell Tax Increment Redevelopment Project area.
Councilman Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to kind of recap this item, these are residential areas in the North Valley that are part of the East Village TIF, and they have not contributed any increment to the TIF, nor have they used any money from the TIF. And it was thought by me and by others, I think, that this could, this area could use the benefits of tax abatement, and it makes the tax abatement area continuous, that whole residential North Valley all the way up to Averyville. So, I will move to approve this item.
Motion to approve, seconded. Is there a second? Councilman Euler? Discussion, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the basis of my questions, I need to ask Corporation Council, we had a question, I had a question as far as how TIFs are established and the communication of that information to the public that it would be impacted by that. Can you explain how TIFs are, what the communication process is for TIFs to be established?
Sure. Under the Redevelopment Act, the state statute requires a various forms of notice to the individual property owners. There are legal notices, first and foremost, that are required to be published in the newspaper, and then each and every property owner has to be mailed a notice when a TIF is initially created.
Can you also explain what the process is when you want to remove someone from a TIF? What is the communication process in that regard?
It's a little counterintuitive because you would think that for as much communication as required to form the TIF, it would be equal in return, in terms of pulling properties out of the TIF, but that's not what the statute requires. The statute does not require any type of hearing before the Joint Review Board to simply remove properties from the TIF, assuming, of course, there is no redevelopment agreement on those parcels. After an ordinance removing properties from the TIF is passed, then it has to be published in the newspaper. A notice has to be issued to the taxing bodies, and then anyone that has signed up to receive notices from the Interested Parties Registry for any of the TIFs. So, in this case, it would be the East Village TIF. They would receive a notice, and we would file a copy with the county.
So, let me understand, to establish a TIF, we send something to every single property owner to establish the TIF?
Correct.
But to remove those property owners for any benefit from the TIF, we don't have to tell them?
As long as there are no redevelopment agreements on the properties, that is correct. And just to note, the, I think, 107 parcels that are proposed for removal, economic development did confirm there are no redevelopment agreements on any of those.
That's the basis for my conversation at this point, that we don't have to tell anybody that they're going to lose a benefit, a benefit that some, I contend, may not even still realize that they have. I've reached out to, well, let me back up, in a December Pera Journal Star article, there was at least one neighborhood association whose president had a concern about this tax abatement process altogether, which I found in the communication does not even list that there was even any community concern, but I'll get to that one next. Going back to the East Village Growth Cell, I also spoke with Christine Call. Many of you may know Christine as the president and CEO of what used to be called South Side Office of Concern. That is now called the Phoenix Community Development Corporation. And I just wanted to make sure that, you know, she was okay with this, and I explained to her, utilizing some documents about the tax abatement, what it was going to do, and she was very much opposed to it. Now, you might ask, well, Phoenix is a nonprofit organization. If they own properties, they're not paying taxes anyway, and you would be correct. However, they have programs that they offer to homeowners, to low-income homeowners, who, if this was to be removed, if those homeowners are removed from this TIF, this program would be, would add cost to what the Phoenix would be able to do or not do. Given an example, Phoenix received $300,000, I believe it was $300,000, and they're going to be able to submit, to accept applications from homeowners specifically in the TIF-defined area, so that they would, and they'd have to be, they have to qualify to be low-income, and they're expecting to be able to help 30, at least 30 homeowners benefit from the program because they're in the TIF. Once they are removed out of the TIF, then that benefit is reduced or potentially goes away. We are already helping, the city has already agreed to set aside some, a certain number of roof applications for these individuals. So, those 30 homeowners, in addition to receiving, eight of them being able to apply for a roof, they could also apply for additional funds, like we've done in the South Side on the South Village TIF. In the South Village TIF, we provided $150,000 to residents who own their own home to improve their properties. But, so, the East Village Growth Cell TIF will allow that same type of thing for the Phoenix Community Development Corporation to be able to do that over there for these low-income homeowners. Once these folks are pulled out, that benefit goes away. And so, my concern is that we've not told these folks that this is going to happen. They don't even realize they're about to lose not only the benefit of the TIF, but additional funding that is available now through the community development, through Phoenix Community Development. And so, I would ask that you deny removing these things from the East Village Growth Cell TIF until, at the very least, you notify these 102 properties, I think it is, 107 parcels, that they're about to lose this benefit. We go through all great means to let folks know about a TIF, but when it comes to removing them from a TIF, we don't even tell them. On the last item we talked about, we indicated that we put it out on the council, on the communication, we put it out, communication list, we put it out on Twitter, we put it out on Facebook and social media, and all, at least seven different ways we let folks know. But in this, we're removing a benefit, and we're not even telling these folks. And so, you might say, well, you know, once it's removed, they may have some time. No, that is incorrect. I asked the question today. If this is approved tonight, they lose the benefit tonight. So, I would only ask that you at least defer this for 30 days to allow community development to send out a postcard to tell these people they're losing this benefit. I will still object to it in 30 days, but at least I will be able to say everybody was informed. Right now, we push this thing about informing the community about things that are going on, yet with this, we're not going to inform the community? And is it because it's this community? I don't know. So, I would ask that you, this item be deferred for 30 days to allow community development to send out a postcard and make folks aware, and in that time, allow community development to determine what the impact is going to be for them if this is removed. Because if you notice on the council communication under financial impact, undetermined at this time, dependent upon new construction and owner occupancy. So, how are we, we don't even know what the impact is, but we're going to approve it anyway? I don't think that's the way we should be passing, adopting ordinances here. So, with that, I'd like to ask for deferral for 30 days to the second meeting in February.
Is there a second? Motion is seconded by Councilmember Ali. Councilman Grab?
Mr. Chairman, I must abstain from discussing this item or voting on this item because of an ownership in the area so designated.
So noted.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Jensen will be in queue. I have Councilman Kelly, then Rigenbach, then Jensen. Councilman Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's been pretty well established that this particular area has never applied for any of the help that the East Village TIF is able to give them, including roofing. They tend to take care of these things themselves, I'm told. I have reached out to this area informally, but also formally to their neighborhood association. Their neighborhood association has been in favor of this for several years. In that article, the president of their association expressed some doubts, but the association has been in favor of this from the outset. I, I think we've had quite a few delays on this. Councilwoman Moore has delayed this from, for, I think, seven months. If this was a burning issue for her, she waited until now to bring it up. I would ask that the deferral be defeated. Thank you.
Councilman Rigenbach, next?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The idea of tax abatement, I'm very intrigued with, and I've been supportive of, and I continue to be. The part about this that's given me heartburn all along has been removing the small portion that overlaps into the East Village Growth Cell TIF. Looking at the numbers, there's 41 single-family used dwellings, and 14 of those are owner-occupied. I would say it would not be an onerous task to have community development reach out to those 41 single-family dwellings and 14 owner-occupied people to make them aware one last time. The thing that has come across loud and clear to me in the last week is that as much as we think we're communicating, it oftentimes isn't being heard. So, Director Black, thank you so much for outlining the process that we use to communicate special uses, and I think we've got a few suggestions and things to add into that, that queue of items. But I certainly don't think it's going to hurt us to reach out specifically to the people who are directly affected by this action. Again, Councilman Kelly, the concept of tax abatement, I'd be happy to support the next item if that would have been possible, but to make an attempt to communicate to the homeowners that are directly affected, I think is the least we can offer. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, the substitute motion is for a deferral, so we're speaking to the deferral. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, on this subject and related to the issue that Councilwoman Moore brought up, I have a question, I think, for Corporation Council regarding the TIF funds, it's my understanding can be used for rehab, but if we do a tax abatement, those funds can only be used for new construction. Is that correct?
That is correct, Councilwoman. The TIF funds can be used for the rehabilitation of existing properties. It has limited availability for new construction, really much past site preparation. You're not allowed to do vertical construction with TIF dollars. The abatement funds would be sort of the exact opposite, that as the statute is currently written, it applies to new construction. written, it applies to new construction. It would not be applicable to any rehabilitation of an existing structure.
Okay, so, so based on that, I, I do think it's, we, it's very worthwhile deferring this, if not including these properties, because those properties won't get any benefit from the tax abatement with regards to rehab. It, it can only be used for new construction, and I'm assuming some of those properties, at least the ones that are occupied, may want to use the funding, and specifically the Phoenix funds that will be made available. So I'll support the motion to defer.
Okay, I have Councilmember Ali, and then Ruck Regal.
Thank you, Mayor Artis. I also support the deferral. Councilman Kelly spoke to the neighborhood association within the, the North Side or North Valley, being supportive, and being supportive for a number of months or years, I think he indicated. But surely that neighborhood association was not aware months or years ago that properties would be removed from the TIF, because we just recently discovered that, or was presented with that, just, just recently. So, you know, a couple of weeks to inform those property owners certainly won't hurt. I think it's always fair to make people aware of a situation that's going to affect their property and their lives. I think not to do so would be wrong. I think it's unfortunate, I know it's by, by some ordinance or regulation, but I, you know, it's too bad that rehab is not included in the tax abatement. I assume it is, I expect that it's probably going to be approved a couple of weeks from now. However, let's make the people that are affected aware of, of the fact that they would be removed. Thank you, Mayor Artis.
Okay, Councilman Ruck Regal next.
Thank you, Mayor. I think what we have tonight is really kind of an unusual situation, because not only are we during a period of COVID where public input and public comment becomes a little bit harder, communication becomes a little bit harder, but also too, we have an unusual situation from what we normally do and what we normally talk about on TIF districts, or we're removing something out of it. And I think that for that reason, I will be supportive of the deferral so that we can have an additional amount of time to communicate with the members who would be most affected by this. I don't think that this deferral puts a hardship on the overall conversation, but I do believe that it is warranted that we have as much possible communication time with the residents who would be most affected by this as possible, so I will be supporting the deferral tonight.
I had Councilman Kelly next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would ask the council to consider not having the good as an enemy of the perfect. I would love this to be perfect as well. However, it's not. Rehabs are not included. If we talk about this particular neighborhood, this particular piece of the neighborhood, they have rejected TIF. TIF has been offered to them as it is offered to everyone in the TIF. They have rejected it consistently ever since this has taken place. Giving them tax abatement does not bring to them something that's bad. It brings to them something that is good and that works. Now, we can delay and delay and delay. Of course, as you know, that frustrates me, I've been promoting this a long time, but the idea that these people are giving up something wonderful, while they have rejected that something consistently for a decade, let's try something else. That something else does not put any burden on them whatsoever. If they don't want to take advantage of tax abatement, that's fine, nobody's forcing them.
Scope is deferral.
Well, it has wandered off that quite a bit since the motion was made, Mr. Mayor.
Just, just trying to keep it tight. There'll be plenty of time for the argument that you're making.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this item? So the motion was for deferral to the first week, the first meeting in February. Second meeting? Okay, second meeting in February, and seconded as well by Councilmember Ali. I'm seeing no lights on the deferral. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen.
Aye.
Councilmember Ruck Regal.
Aye.
We have seven ayes, three noes, and one abstention. Voting no were Councilmembers Kelly, Montalongo, and Euler, Councilmember Grab abstain. According to the clerk, that we have to procedurally pass the, the abatement ordinance before we can pass the TIF ordinance, so that would necessitate us to defer the next item as Can we get a motion to do so? Motion by Councilmember Ali to defer, seconded by Councilman Riegenbach. Discussion on this deferral. Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Ruck Regal. This motion passes with seven ayes, three noes, one abstention. Voting no, Councilmembers Kelly, Moore, and Euler, and voting abstaining was Councilman Grab. Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one dash oh thirty-nine is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Public Works with a request for the following. A is to adopt an ordinance establishing the Peoria Combined Sewer Overflow Remediation District, and B is to approve a resolution setting fees effective May 1, 2023, with planned annual increases through May 1, 2026 for the Peoria Combined Sewer Remediation Project District.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We would ask for a two-week deferral on this item. There's a couple of things that, that I just want to summarize here very quickly first. The, the request is to establish a CSO sewer rate. This would be to fund all of the capital investments for our combined sewer overflow. We currently have two fees in our, our sewer rates that we have established. The first is the lateral rate, which is set on those ratepayers that are, are paying for the sewer system that we own. Those people pay for, we, we also use those revenues to pay for the maintenance expense on those specific sewers. The second is a citywide rate, which is a rehabilitation rate. That's for us applying for all of the capital improvements that we've made to our sewer system, and we apply that across all of the ratepayers. What we're looking to do, and, and what staff needs two weeks more to do, is to come back to you with an analysis that will show how the rehabilitation rate we're going to propose would go down over time as our debt service goes down and the needs for the rehabilitation rate goes down, and then the CSO rate would go up. So while it may not be a dollar-for-dollar reduction in the rates, the effort would be done to try and keep our rates as low as possible over time. So with two weeks, we'll be able to come back and provide all of that information to you. In the packet, though, you do have our, our 2019 stormwater report that does go a, a long way towards addressing Councilman Sears' requests. This has all of the list of the capital projects that we've undertaken, what the backlog of stormwater projects are, so that information is listed there. When we come back to you in two weeks, though, we will also bring back kind of projections on what the stormwater utility fee will look like from here going out to the year 2059, which is when the, the actual end of the debt service for the combined sewer overflow issues will fall off. So staff has some more work to finalize that, that financial analysis for you, and we'll present that to you in two weeks.
Questions for the manager? Seeing none, we'd accept a motion for a two-week deferral. Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilmember Sears. Motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen.
Aye.
Councilmember Ruck Regal. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one dash oh forty is a request to adopt an ordinance amending the Peoria Urban Enterprise Zone to include Galena Road Industrial Park, former Midstate College Complex on Northmore Road, industrial site on Route US 150, the shopping center at, at 200 MacArthur Highway, industrial site at 801 Southwest Jefferson, shopping center on West War Memorial Drive, and residential apartments on Romeo B Garrett.
Councilman Riegenbach.
Move for the approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Euler. Discussion, Councilman Kelly.
Thank you. Just a point of information. Mr. Manager, there is a square mileage max on enterprise zones. Is that correct?
There, there is a square mileage max on the number of parcels that we can have in the enterprise zone, but I don't believe we're anywhere near that, that max limit.
The number of parcels or the number of square miles?
Square miles.
Okay. And we are not anywhere close to it. Thank you.
Thank you. I had Councilman Grab next.
Manager, what is the shopping center on War Drive?
Maybe if I could ask Kevin Evans, our senior development specialist, to come to the microphone and explain the shopping center on War Memorial Drive?
So, yes, the, the lots that on, listed on War Memorial Drive are the outlots in and around Northwoods Mall.
Mr. Managers, did you say Northwoods Mall?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? We have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen.
Aye.
Councilmember Ruck Regal. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We're at unfinished business.
Any unfinished business to come before the council tonight? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
We're at new business.
New business to come before the council tonight? Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of items. The first is regarding the, the roof repair lottery, and I've got a communication here that I've been asked to, to provide. The City of Peoria's Community Development Department 2021 Roof Repair Lottery Entry Period is now open. This annual program assists low-income homeowners who are unable to afford needed roof repairs. Funds are available through CDBG federal entitlement funds. Entries will be collected until Wednesday, February the third, that's this coming Wednesday, Wednesday, February the third at 5:00 p.m. Interested applicants can enter the lottery by going to www.poria.gov.org or appreciatepeoria.com, or calling the grants coordinator, Cassie Belter, and I'll give you that phone number. Cassie's phone number is 309-369-2060. I'll give you that number again. The lottery drawing will be held virtually on Thursday, February the ninth at 10:00 a.m. Twenty households will be selected and we will, and will be required to submit additional application information. All other households will be placed on a waitlist. Applicants must meet all eligibility requirements, including owning the home for at least one year, passing an interior and exterior inspection, and having active homeowner's insurance. More information can be found on the city website, and the information will be posted on Public Cable Channel 22. So if you have Comcast and you turn to Channel 22, and this information that I'm reading will be, will be displayed there. The important thing to remember is Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, not tomorrow, next week Wednesday, February the third at 5:00 p.m., your application has to be in. The next thing I want to, would like to mention is that if you, hopefully you all saw the press release, that our grants department has been very active, and they have received $200,000 specifically for 61605. And these funds are available for demolition. There's a, we've, we've torn down properties that have been sitting vacant and abandoned for years, and these are the, some of the worst of the worst. We're not trying to, we can't tear our way down to a new community, but those derelict properties that, that have been out there 10 years, 15 years, you know the ones, we've received another $200,000 to take those down. I mentioned earlier regarding the Phoenix Community Development and the fact that they have received funding that they will be making available to low-income homeowners inside the East Village Growth Cell TIF. They will be coming out with the information about that, so if you reside in this, this area, and you will know because you will soon receive a, a postcard, you will be contact, you can contact Phoenix to see if you can qualify for repairs to your property with funds that they have received. And lastly, Phoenix is closing this week on the Madison Apartment project, you know, Madison Apartments downtown, that building. They are closing on that project this week and plan to be, to do a lot of work in those areas to, for the benefit of low-income homeowners. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Grab.
Thank you, Manager. You're a, I've received multiple complaints from citizens, not only in my district, but also in the city, and it's created some discussion on our Nextdoor app about the failure of Comcast, our major cable provider, to appropriately process checks that are sent in for payment each month. A number of my constituents, two months in a row, some one month, sent a check, were told that they had not paid, and in some cases, it was a considerable amount of money they would have to pay electronically lest they have their service shut off. There are apparently problems with their processing center. You have an inside contact within the City of Peoria, I, I believe, that you can talk to. It's probably beyond, I hate to say this, but with the big bureaucracy, it's something he should know about, and because I think the people who work for Comcast in our area do a good job, but, but this is not good.
I would be happy to reach out to Comcast and let them know the problem and, and see if we can't get a response as well.
Yes, and, and again, it's been on Nextdoor app. I've received personal calls, and I must confess, I too have had this issue two months in a row. I pay a lot of vendors, but when, two months in a row, you know, the check's not going through, the, the next question is, do you cancel the check if it's for two months, maybe over $500, which is expensed to you? In some cases, some of my constituents had to quarrel with them a little bit, have quite a hassle about them removing late fees, and so I appreciate your working with our contact on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business tonight? New business? Thank you. Any other new business tonight? New business? I'm hearing none. Mr. Manager, just pursuant to earlier discussions this evening, I would like you and the staff to work on scheduling an opportunity for the council to have a policy session wrapped around the different issues as they relate to cannabis licensing in the City of Peoria. Madam Clerk.
We're at citizens' opportunity to address the city council, and I have not received any emails that pertain to this portion of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So we do not have an executive session, so we would be at adjournment.
Motion to adjourn Councilman Sears and seconded by Councilmember Euler. Seeing no discussion, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen.
Aye.
Councilmember Ruck Regal.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. This evening's meeting is adjourned.
Hey, Zach.